If you'd please rise to honor nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We have under special order of business, spotlight on excellence, Stockholzer School, eighth grade student Shane Graham Bevis, a teen advocate against bullying. Shane?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Shane Graham Bevis. I am fourteen and currently attend a Stockholzer Middle School. I became interested in anti-bullying three years ago when I became a victim to a child much bigger than me on the school bus. I did not know him and he didn't know me. I was stabbed in the hand with a roofing nail and kicked so hard in the ribs that I had a shoe mark three hours later when my doctor examined me. The driver did nothing to stop it although he saw it. Luckily, there was footage from the video on the bus. I don't want any child to have to go through what I did. I had supportive parents. Some children have no one and feel they can turn to and wonder what they did to deserve the bullying. They feel bullying is a normal passage of rights for kids. It is not and needs to be stopped. Children should feel safe in school as well as in our city. I would like to see more done in our schools to promote awareness to bullying and the long-lasting effect it causes. The effects of bullying carry into adulthood and can cause depression, low self-esteem, relationship and work issues, repeated jail stays, and even suicide. I do not think the one lecture at the beginning of the year, school year, is enough. It needs to be addressed on a monthly basis at minimum. Some national bullying statistics for 2012 are one-fourth of students from elementary school through high school have been harassed or bullied on school property because of gender, religion, sexual orientation, or disability. Forty-three percent of kids fear being bullied in the bathrooms at school. Playground statistics: every seven minutes, a child is bullied. Adult intervention: four percent. Peer intervention: eleven percent. No intervention: eighty-five percent. I do not understand why anyone thinks it's okay to walk away while someone is being bullied and not say a word. What is being taught to the children of tomorrow? Cyberbullying statistics: forty-three percent of kids have been bullied while online; ninety-seven percent of middle schoolers are being bullied while online; twenty-one percent of kids have received threatening emails; fifty-eight have not told their parents. Every person on my team has attended Lowell Schools and has been bullied during this time. One has moved on to the vote and the story is no different. It continues: my brother because he has Asperger's Syndrome and others because of appearance. This is a nationwide problem, state to state, city to city, and school to school. My friend Xavier lives in Malden and is also an advocate and the situation is the same there. Children should not fear going to school. Some kids fear telling their parents because talking to school officials makes it worse. We need to learn to respect for each other. I personally have done lots to promote awareness such as modeled in a fashion show in Cape Cod with UR Brand to raise money, danced in a flash mob in Boston at Faneuil Hall, I was interviewed on BNN TV in Roxbury, and I was also interviewed by the Lowell Sun. I handed out flyers in Cambridge at an anti-violence festival with my friend Carla Romero, a Latina woman running for Congress in District Seven. Upcoming events include speaking to a hundred females at MIT in Cambridge, giving a speech at Splash Ultra for the Italian Children's Home in Boston, and in July, I was invited to the Puerto Rican Festival in Dorchester and given a table to pass out flyers and information about anti-bullying with my friend Xavier and my team. We will also be marching in their parade. I will also be filming a short commercial for our local TV cable, or cable TV, with two of my friends. I am currently writing a children's book about how to handle a bully. It is geared towards kindergarten children. I have received numerous letters and emails from people of all ages and all different states. I recently received a personal letter from Attorney General Martha Coakley and also from Trayvon Martin's mother. I currently mentor an eleven-year-old from Ohio and a fifteen-year-old from South Boston who were both bullied because of their looks. This past Sunday, I was asked to help an eight-year-old boy that just moved to Lowell from Haverhill and is being bullied. He will be the newest member of my team. All my flyers and bracelets and posters and promotional materials I have printed with money I earned doing chores. People as far away as Missouri and Ohio have been placing orders for information and posters to place in their schools. My personal goal is to see my anti-bullying posters up in all the Lowell Schools. What I would like to see for all Lowell Schools is possibly a school-wide anti-bullying day, having all the schools have a field day on the same day. It gives kids from all schools throughout the city something to talk about. Invite families and teachers, have informational tables about anti-bullying. Each school could have a monthly contest to pick a slogan for anti-bullying, and the child whose slogan is picked gets to hang their slogan on a poster on the front of their school. There could be an anti-bullying spirit day. We could have an anti-bullying group from each school consisting of students and teachers' advisors to plan events. Role-playing for elementary students is very beneficial to help children that have been bullied switch places with the bully. It teaches empathy. Anti-bullying dance night at schools. Schools could come up with a song or rap to represent their school. Also, we could have a "Cot Doing Something Nice" day. If a staff or person sees someone doing something nice for somebody they don't know, they get a card from the teacher. After collecting a certain amount of cards, they get a small reward, something simple like a homework pass or a free snack in the lunchroom or some other small token of appreciation. The more we do in our school to promote anti-bullying, the better our schools will be. It's all about communication and teaching people to see the likenesses in each other instead of the differences. I promote unity among all. The children in our schools are the future of Lowell. I recently began working with a group in Cape Cod called UR Brand. They promote anti-bullying and go to area schools. They have a dance team called "The New Generation" and people that were bullied and speak on the effects. One speaker is Michael, a teen with autism. Another is a girl that was beaten for being too pretty. She was left for dead and required numerous surgeries and has multiple points in her face. They're coming to my school on May 25th to perform. I will also be performing with them. I was born in Lowell and have attended schools here my whole life. I want all children to have a school experience that is pleasant and promotes a good learning atmosphere. Thank you for your time and support. A special shout-out to the teachers and my friends at the Stockholzer and my family and team that supports me. Won't you all support my anti-bullying program? Thank you. Can my team pass out some information now? And does anyone have any questions for me or anyone on my team?
Any questions for Shane? Thank you very much for coming to speak before the school committee tonight. We next have a spotlight on excellence, Lowell High School junior, Ong Kinmin, who spoke before an audience of a thousand people recently, and he's here tonight with us. So, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to introduce Department Chair Stephen Jarvis, who is going to present the rest of the program. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Superintendent Franco. Ong Kinmin, a Lowell High School junior, arrived in the United States in eighth grade with his sister and parents and a talent for learning language. This talent would allow Ong Kinmin to enroll in all honors and AP classes at Lowell High School. During this year, his junior year, Ong joined the Public Service and Civic Engagement Academy and enrolled in the foundational course for the program, Facing History in Ourselves. The international organization Facing History in Ourselves works with educators throughout their careers to improve their effectiveness in the classroom as well as their students' academic performance and civic learning. Through a rigorous investigation of the events that led to the Holocaust as well as other examples of genocide and mass violence, students in a Facing History class learn to combat prejudice with compassion, indifference with participation, and misinformation with knowledge. They learn that the survival and nurturing of democracy takes the full participation of its citizens. As a student in Facing History, Ong found the words to describe his own journey to the United States and to share his own personal experiences with ethnic cleansing, mass violence, and the experience of being the other. When the director of Facing History's National Office in Brookline asked Lowell High School teacher Maryam Morgenstern if she had a student who could speak at the organization's benefit dinner, Ong Kinmin immediately came to mind. Not unlike President Obama or former Governor Romney, Ong was soon working with a speech writer and attending coaching sessions with a drama instructor. He was to be the highlighted speaker of the gala held at the Weston Hotel in Boston. On May 2nd, Ong Kinmin delivered his captivating speech of survival to a thousand Facing History supporters including Mayor Tom Menino, Boston University President Robert A. Brown, and Massachusetts Secretary of Education Paul Revel. He told of his escape from Burma, his life in a refugee camp in Thailand, and his family's second escape to Malaysia. In addition, Ong talked about his current work as a case manager at the International Institute of Lowell where he acts as an interpreter for Burmese refugees. After his speech, the audience spontaneously rose to their feet to deliver a standing ovation for Ong and his bravery in telling his remarkable tale of survival to a thousand strangers. And we have Ong here as well as Maryam Morgenstern, the teacher from Facing History in Ourselves from Lowell High School.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This school district exists and flourishes because of students like you, and you have honored us by stepping forward with your experiences to bring to the city of Boston and beyond, and we are so very proud of you and thank you, and your teachers, your amazing teachers, who believed in you every step of the way and have helped you to reach this maximum potential. So, I thank every Lowell High School person who has touched you live. I thank your family, but I thank you especially for honoring Lowell with your ability to express yourself. Thank you so very much.
I should also point out that Ong has his contingent with him as well of fans, so welcome to all of you as well. We have, in the next order of business, we have the minutes, approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, May 2nd, 2012. Motion accepted and placed on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have permission to enter for May 16th, 2012. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the Robert F. Kennedy Children's Action Corps Incorporated for $16,000 to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for two students enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IEP. Funding is provided through the Special Education FY-12 Budget Special Education Tuition Account. The remainder of these pages, I'm going to just tell the cause one time because it is the annual contract for our out-of-district placements. So, for all of the remaining parts of this, it is to provide for out-of-district placement for students in each one of these agencies, and also the funding is provided by the school department FY-13 budget Special Education Tuition Account. So, to the Archway Incorporated for $143,462, to the Brandon Residential Treatment Center Incorporated for $99,748, to the Cottings School Incorporated for $81,365, to Easter Seals of New Hampshire Incorporated for $384,617, to the Evergreen Center, I'm sorry, to the Easter Seals, no, I got that one, sorry, Evergreen Center Incorporated, $164,322, to the Landmark School Incorporated for $45,888, to the Lighthouse School Incorporated for $571,234, to the Little People School Incorporated for $34,810, to the New England Long Term Care Incorporated for $231,581, to the Northeast Behavioral Health Corporation for $88,625, to the Perkins School for the Blind for $381,609, to the Seven Hills Foundation Incorporated for $49,885, to the St. Anne's Home Incorporated for $379,969, to the Deveraux Foundation for $48,264, to the Learning Center for the deaf Incorporated for $170,488, to the May Institute Incorporated for $290,272, to the Riddell All-American Sports Corporation for $14,416. I'm sorry.
Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, could we do the Seven Hills Foundation separately, please, on the vote?
Sure. Motion to take Seven Hills separately by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. What's the wish of the committee? Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Next, we have under motions, the first motion of the night by Kristen Rossikowicz and Kim
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Scott, request that the superintendent establish and implement best practices around bullying
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
prevention across the district to ensure that the practice is consistent and measurable.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Ms. Rossikowicz. Thank you. Next, we have memorials.
Thank you very much.
First is Mary E. Manning Dunnehu, a retired secretary at the East North Rogers School.
So, I think the motion speaks for itself.
Edwin Campbell, father of Barbara Outridge, the E. House clerk at Lowell High School.
We have anti-bullying policy throughout the district, however, each school is taking
And Richard Lamash, father of veteran service director Eric Lamash.
its own initiative and has its own framework in how they implement anti-bullying programs.
If you'd please rise in a moment of silence and darkness.
For instance, the Daily School has a process in place where they are actually implementing surveys to all their students on a quarterly basis and actually getting real-time, raw data from their students and actually assessing the success of their anti-bullying curriculum. Now, that's Senator Daley. It's my understanding that's not done everywhere else. I think it's important that we, you know, moving forward with any type of initiative, whether it be, you know, around curriculum or facilities or anything within the district, we have to make decisions based on data, and it goes right down onto our anti-bullying program. Now, I give Shane a great deal of credit to get up here and do what he did and what he's done, and he really provides an example to all of our children in the district that the power of one can become the power of many, and that's extremely impressive. And I think with children like that in our school system, we really benefit and our community benefits. So, I think I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, who is a... Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The motion that we made, I believe we were looking for information to make sure that we're having a research-based curriculum across all the schools at a bare minimum. Also, on what the professional development is that's being provided to the teachers on the curriculum and if the implementation is being followed through in all the schools. So, really just a bare, basic, you know, bare minimum of what's happening, just an update is what I'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly support the motion and the, I think, the intention of this to move forward and to make sure that this remains right on the forefront for us. I would like to ask, as we get the report back from the motion, I'd love to see it include the listing we had started in September, having our meeting of the Student Support Services Committee, and I think at that time, it was pretty clear that we were uneven in the way that we were implementing our bullying prevention programs and policies across the district. And I think it was certainly a very clear message that we wanted to see those best practices that we all hear about anecdotally, you know, the work that's going on at the Daley, I think, at least to my knowledge, is really exemplary, and what we'd like to see across the district. And I think that's one of the key things we really need to do is we know where things are working. We need to find a way to replicate that success across the district. So, I think that, you know, this is a well-timed motion. It gives us an opportunity to lay some groundwork now, but I do think that we need to make sure that this is something that we're returning to over and over again and that we recognize that there are, again, some exceptionally successful programs that have been developed in our district, and the real challenge is to see them expand and to see the expertise that's happening in these pockets be shared across the district. So, that's, I'd certainly be supporting my colleague's motion and looking forward to moving forward in this endeavor.
Thank you. Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good motion, and it's well-timed, and I would suggest that the superintendent take the opportunity that she has to work with Shane and his team because nobody knows bullying better than someone that's been bullied. So, before we lose Shane to the vote, I think we should take advantage of his team and the great work that they've done because I'd like his school district to be the very first school district to actually implement his ideas and his vision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have a motion by Mr. Conway to be recorded in support of House Bill Number 3817 and further explore the creation of a pilot program with Smart Bus Live for the installation of surveillance cameras on buses to track and penalize motor vehicle moving violations. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A number of weeks ago, I received a call from Lieutenant Tim Crowley from the Police Department, and he wanted to talk about a particular program that was taking place in the country in a number of different states and also used as some pilot programs within our own state. And he explained the program as something that would be a very, an excellent safety issue for our students in regards to the buses, the embarking and disembarking of our students, and that he talked about the statistical data that was absolutely incredible about the number of individuals that ignored that stop sign coming from the bus, and that there were a number of children that were hurt and even killed in the country. And there was a company that became very creative and innovative where they have started a program where cameras are on the outside of the bus, and they're put on the buses by this company at no cost to the city or to the school department, and the penalty or the fine would be split between the city and also the company. As I said, it has taken place in a number of different states. There's not a law yet in Massachusetts. I called Senator Eileen Dunnehu and talked to her about it. She thought it was a great idea, and what she and the city solicitor Christine O'Connor have worked on this for a few weeks to make sure that it was appropriate, and just the other day, we came up with this motion. And again, I think it's something that the company told the city solicitor and the senator that they'd like to come to a subcommittee meeting, perhaps in transportation, and explain the program in further detail. So, I think it's something we certainly should take a look at, and again, I think it's something that certainly can help our students be safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Rossikowicz.
I'm certainly going to support this motion. You know, having two children that take the bus every day, you know, I've been in the position of actually having watched cars just blow right by the stop sign that comes out of that school bus and, God forbid, you know, one of our kids get hurt. So, I think it's very timely. I think it's an excellent motion. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have a motion by Kim Scott to request that the superintendent's report on the feasibility and price for our elementary school students to attend a Civics Day field trip. The day should include a visit to Lowell City Hall, the library, the police, and fire departments, and a discussion of municipal voting in our Plante Charter. Also, to be included in the report would be the pricing for a field trip to tour the State House for our middle school students. Seconded by Mr. Leary, Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start off by thanking my colleague, Mr. Conway, for a motion that he made for civics to be introduced into the curriculum. I believe it was back in January or February that we're waiting for response on. This would be specific to a Civics Day field trip, just the field trip portion, not the entire curriculum. I'd like it to be included with a feasibility study to do it. I believe we do other field trips in district. We do the Songus Museum, and the reason I chose the elementary and the middle school level, and that could be changed, but the fifth grade curriculum that we're trying to bring in is about civics part of it. So, I just, I was trying to put it into the curriculum, but I'd be open to where the administration feels that it fits within the curriculum. And I think it's just time for us to really introduce the city to the kids and to really push for more voting in the municipal and state elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next, we have another motion by Kim Scott to request that the superintendent furnish and itemize accounting of any rebates or advertising fees it receives from Aramok in connection with its school meal program. Also, to be included, information on any contract language that allows for Aramok to keep rebates or to advertise to our children. Seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz, Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The intent of the motion was to find out about, actually, I'll start off with how this came up. I received a menu home, and within the menu, there was some advertising for some brand-name products in the lunch menu, at which point in time, my children then asked me to go out and purchase those brand-name products. So, I started doing a little research into how the program works and how Aramok receives rebates back from manufacturers, and I really just wanted to get an update from you, Mr. Lang, on what the amount of rebates that we receive and the language, as the motion says, within the contract. level, and that could be changed, but the fifth grade curriculum that we're trying to bring in is about civics part of it. So, I just, I was trying to put it into the curriculum, but I'd be open to where their administration feels that it fits within the curriculum. And, and I think it's just time for us to, to really introduce the city to the kids and to really push for more voting in the municipal and state elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have another motion by Kim Scott to request the superintendent furnish an itemized accounting of any rebates or advertising fees it receives from Aramok in connection with its school meal program. Also, to be included, information on any contract language that allows for Aramok to keep rebates or to advertise to our children. Seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The intent of the motion was to find out about, actually, I'll start off with how this came up. I received a menu home and within the menu, there was some advertising for some brand name products in the lunch menu, at which point in time, my children then asked me to go out and purchase those brand name products. So, I started doing a little research into how the program works and how Aramok receives rebates back from manufacturers. And I really just wanted to get an update from you, Mr. Lang, on what, the amount of rebates that we receive and the language, as the motion says, within the contract that tells, you know, do we get money back when they put things on the menu, when Aramok does it, or is that just included in the, the flat rate for the contract? Thank you.
Mr. Lang.
Thank you. I can't answer the, the part about the advertising in the contract. I'll have to look and see specifically what's in there. But on the rebates, it's actually a requirement of the Mass DOE when he went to, and enter into a food service agreement with a management company. And I believe it's actually tied to the federal child nutrition program that a hundred percent of the rebates that Aramok receives in our behalf have to come back to the district. And they're actually, they show up on our monthly invoicing as a line item that's credited to us on the invoice. So, they...
Any...
I'm, you know, I'm a hundred percent sure...
I couldn't hear anything by saying so.
Thank you. As far as the rebates are concerned, they're all coming back to us. They show up as a line item credit on each of our monthly invoices and it's the state regulation and federal regulation that those credits, rebates can't remain with a food service management company. They have to come back to the district. So, they do show up monthly. I'm just not specifically sure about any particular advertising clauses in the contract or how if they actually spelled, called out a particular brand name product that they were serving, how the advertising works. But there's no extra fees or anything generated for that. And if they did get some kind of a rebate for doing that, it would come back to us. But I'll, I'll respond to, to the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Ross Sikowitz.
I just have a quick question. Do you have an idea off the top of your head what that figure looks like in terms of the amount that we receive in rebate over the course of the year?
Mr. Lang.
I honestly don't want to guess.
So, no?
No, I'm not going to guess. But it, it, I don't have the itemized report, but it's right on the monthly invoices. That's something I can turn around very quickly and just tell you by month how much we actually received in, in rebates.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have a motion by Kim Scott to request the superintendent provide status update on televising subcommittee meetings. Seconded by Mr. Leary, Ms. Scott.
Thank you. I was just trying to find out a motion, I mean, a, a timeline. The motion was made back in February of 2011 by John Leahy to investigate the cost. The August 17th Subcommittee of 2011, it was approved with a deadline for it to be done, well, not a deadline, it was expected to be done by the holidays of 2011. So, I just wanted to get an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Lang.
If you want to disverbully, I can respond and maybe we can knock this one off before it even gets on the list. The, the TV studio is a hundred percent equipped and up and running. Anytime a chairperson of a committee wants to schedule the subcommittee meeting in the room, it's reserved basically for subcommittee meetings at night. We use it a little bit during the day for conference rooms, but it's a hundred percent available in the evenings. We are still working through the live feed on the, the meetings. The live feed issues will probably be resolved over the course of the summer. But as of right now, you, certainly we had a few community meetings in there already. But whatever chair would like to schedule a meeting in the room, they can. They would be taped and then played back on Channel 22 the next day and they'd be put into a cycle. But the room's a hundred percent ready for, for use, just not live broadcasting at this point. That'll be probably the summer.
Thank you. Mr. Conway.
Just a quick question. Do you have, are the personnel there to do this or is this something that we can do or you can do?
What we're going to end up doing is we had it configured very similar to this studio where it's just a one-person operation to run all the cameras and the graphics and whatnot. And we're coordinating, we're coordinating that with Jack Manout and his staff at the high school. So, any evening that we're going to need a representative, either he or one of his staff will come and, and do the meeting for us. And we are going to also involve, I believe during the course of the school year, some kids that might be interested to learn some of the equipment, they would be invited as well.
So, does that involve overtime for the individual to come out and do this?
It could either be an overtime or a comp time issue. If someone's going to cover an evening meeting for us, we could do one or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gignac. Ms. Ross Sikowitz. I don't know why you were all putting your hands up, but okay. Okay, fair enough. No further discussion then. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Moving on to the subcommittee reports. Hopefully, there'll be something to report for the Joint Finance Curriculum Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of the Meeting of Thursday, May 10th, 2012. Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. This was the, one of the, the CFT subcommittees that we have. Its, uh, membership is Mr. Leary, myself, Ms. Martin and Ms. Scott. It's a, one of the most influential and successful subcommittees that you might ever see anywhere. The topic for this subcommittee was revolving our growth in, in the kindergarten classes and the bubble that appears to be coming in for the second year. The administration team proposed to the subcommittee that we take the bubble, which I believe is in the realm of a hundred and twenty, excuse me, 200 students, if I'm correct, for kindergarten, and look at presenting a kindergarten class at Ro, at the Rogers School. The kindergarten class at the Rogers School would be a makeup of, of young children who did not actually attend any preschool. And with our, our folks with John Dakota's department are able to actually drill down in the information and really understand what child has, you know, the preschool education, whether it be with our preschool or with a private preschool. Approximately, I believe, 110 to 120 students fit this mold. And what we want to do is really address some of their initial kindergarten needs and the bubble of 200 students at the same time. And what the administration's plan was to actually take 120 students and bring them to the Rogers School as an initial kindergarten, which would alleviate some of the issues that we had last year by overcrowding in some of our schools, such as the Pawtucketville Memorial School and others. So, what we do essentially is hire staff to actually teach the kindergarten within the Rogers School and really bring the facilities at the Rogers School, which is already suited for young children as we have some of our preschool education going on at the Rogers. This was, it was a good, interesting dialogue in terms of how many students this number would be, how much staffing this would actually be. And I guess that we can go through the superintendent or Mr. Lang to go over the actual numbers and the cost. At this point, the subcommittee didn't take a position in terms of actually voting to approve funds for it that will actually be within the budget. But the overall philosophy, I think the, the subcommittee understood that we do have an overcrowding issue this year again. We have an unknown next year with a charter school coming into the district, which would approximately take, I believe, 500 students. So, instead of actually going back to modular schools or some other type of action plan, we thought around the box by thinking of what would be beneficial to the students that are entering the kindergarten class with preschool education or other types of formalized, you know, pre-kindergarten education as, and the children that don't have that education. So, in es, in essence, what we're going to do is really work with those students again that don't have the preschool background and bring them up to date with where they should be in the kindergarten level. And at the same point, it would help the kids that are in the kindergarten level move forward. The action plan really at that point is, is, is open, pending on how our student enrollment will go forward next year, which is ambiguous based on not only economic environment with more students coming into the public school system, but also the, the potential reduction at that age group with the charter school coming in. I would defer to the rest of the subcommittee and the staff with other information, but the actual cost would be within the actual budget. So, I think it's something that would be a motion for report of progress. It'd be more information to discuss during the budget deliberations. Make that a form of a motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the report?
Thank you very much. I do think that the administration did present us with a great deal of information. I think there were a couple points and I know my colleague had reflected them. One of the key things I think that we discussed was this idea that we're now in year two of a bubble that we didn't see coming. And that's, I think, something we need to pay some attention to. I had this, you know, exact same conversation last year when it happened. It just seems odd that this would sneak up on us. I understand that, you know, our, our community is very fluid and we have people, new families coming in and out. I mean, that's the nature of what our community is all about. But, you know, based on census data, based on, you know, working with the, the organizations that, that work in kind of the emerging immigrant communities, we, it seems to me we should be able to come up with a better predictor, process, just so that we can, you know, making these plans in May. I applaud the administration for coming up with what I think is a good plan, but it, it's an extremely difficult thing to make these kinds of, to accommodate these kinds of numbers when you don't see them coming, you know, more than a few months before really the, the school year is going to begin. So, if we could, I, I would like at our next, whether it's at the next joint finance or however the administration would like to report back, even maybe to the main committee because I don't think it'll be terribly intensive. But where we see ways that we can improve our, our process for preparing for the next school year and how we're tracking population trends within the city. Secondly, I do want to say too is that, you know, I think that the presentation that was made by the administration is something that is a good stopgap solution. I think we all recognize that we're in a very unique position right now. There is going to be, there's the potential for some, obviously very dramatic change in the way our students are going to be distributed across our city with charter schools and, and those types of things kind of in play right now. So, I do think that it was really wise to come up with a one-year solution that allows us to accommodate the children we know will be there. But I think it's important to note that this is really just the beginning of the conversation and that the way we're going to work with this, with this population bubble of kindergarteners, now a two-year, two-year bubble, I think we, we should be talking in, in larger terms once we get through this, again, very recognizable challenge of a single year. So, I think that, you know, I'm pleased with the, the proposal that the administration created and I do think that it's in our best interest as a district for this next year. And I look forward as we go, as we move forward to determining what our long-term strategy will be to work with these, these children and their families.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the report? We have a motion by Mr. Leary to accept and place on file, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have Curriculum Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of Meeting of Thursday, May 10th, 2012. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If my colleague wouldn't mind, from the, from the joint meeting, we did also discuss the STEAM District Support Specialist, but that's also included in mine so we can...
There you go.
Just to make sure we cover it. At the Subcommittee on May 10th, in attendance were members of the Curriculum Subcommittee, myself, Ms. Leary and Ms. Scott, also our colleagues, Mr. Gignac and Ms. Ross Sikowitz, and from Central Office Superintendent Franco, Assistant Superintendent Abrams and Martha Cohn, who is our pre-K-12 Science Social Studies Coordinator. That's quite a title. At this, at the Subcommittee, we did have four key items that we were talking about. The first one really was the STEAM initiatives that we've been discussing, science, technology, engineering, arts and, and mathematics. This is a, an acronym that's being tossed around, I think, all over the place lately. So, never one to be lost, left behind in an acronym. Lowell is jumping right on board. We were informed of a grant that the Lowell Public Schools has received from the Gelfand Family Foundation Charitable Trust. I don't know if, for some reason, I thought that was a different name, but that's correct? Gelfland? Okay, thank you. One thing that wasn't in the minutes was the amount, the total amount. I don't know if you know that off the... Twenty thousand? There you go. And then we'd be looking forward to, in future years, to implement the, the plan that we're going to be developing at this point. For this planning, the district is pulling together a steering committee. It will feature our science teachers from across the district, our science administrators both at the high school and, again, the pre-K-12 position will also be involved in that. I think one of the key things and one of the things I found most really exciting is this idea that as part of this, we are looking at eighth grade science fairs for the first time since I've been on this committee in a really comprehensive way. And I think that's really going to be very exciting for our students and something that our district is really going to be able to be quite proud of as we, as we implement that. Also, as part of our introduction to the, the STEAM information, we were given a small science experiment to conduct as committee members. We failed miserably, every one of us. Just going to throw that out there. If I was ever dependent on coming up with a way to use batteries and a light bulb, I'd be in the dark, let me just say. But it was a great little process to, to teach all of us a little something new. So, that was the, the first report of progress that happened during the, during the Subcommittee meeting. We also got an update on the Healthy Futures Program, a program that's been in our district for many years now. They are working in very close collaboration with Boston University as a way of evaluating the effectiveness of their programming. So, they are taking a cohort of students. They are currently in sixth grade, moving up to seventh grade and then ultimately to eighth grade, going through, getting the Healthy Futures, health classes. Some are getting the full complement of Healthy Futures. Some are getting kind of half of the Healthy Futures and half provided by in-district staff. So, it has been, we'll be looking forward to getting the results of that to see where the real effectiveness is. I think it'll be pretty interesting information to see what's, what's working best in our district. They are expanding so that they are taking on some additional topic areas, I guess we'd say. Again, talking about doing an anti-bullying rally for our middle schools. They are also working, I think, in a pretty proactive way to try and pull together parent support and really create some new parent activities and groups that will be part of our, of our school district. And they are looking, they do have resources and funds that they'll be putting towards that effort, which I think is, is, certainly shows their commitment. So, we did accept that as a report of progress as well. We received information on the UTEACH program, which is a program at the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, which is taking content, students who are going through, whether it's, whether it's English or mathematics. I guess there is a focus on mathematics and, and science. And UTEACH really takes them through this process of getting the content, but also getting their teaching experience and certification so that they're working with, they're working with established teachers, they're having time in schools to kind of, you know, really put in place the pedagogy that they're learning in the classroom. So far, the reaction from staff here in the public schools who've been part of it certainly has been very positive. And we're looking at this as one more way that we can really get new skilled teachers in these sometimes challenging content areas at both the middle and the high school levels. Our final topic was the curriculum brochures. This was as a result of a motion of my colleague, Ms. Scott. I think we have the beginnings of a good plan. I think really all the committee had some ideas and, and suggestions for us as we move forward. We did talk about also using technology as a vehicle for this, not just relying on, you know, reams and reams of paper to get the information out. And I think that if we're looking at a comprehensive process, we really would be including, you know, certainly a revamped website, which is something we're all anxious to see in place. Also using our Connect Ed technology, which has been really effective and could really be a nice kind of trigger for families to know that the information's coming home. And I think to look at, you know, as we balance what kind and, and how intensive the information is that we want to send home. I walked away with a pretty strong sense of this committee being committed to having standards as part of this, our true standards, what we're designing all of our curriculum around, being part of that communication with families. So, I think that that was communicated pretty clearly and that the administration and certainly Assistant Superintendent Claire Abrams is going to be working to bring back the next iteration of, of this effort. But at the very least, I think, again, timing-wise, this gives us time to get the ideas in place and then be able to, when we start the new school year in September, after all of the curriculum, curriculum mapping and everything else that goes on, we know all summer long, we'll be able to have these materials to share with our families, to give them concrete, trackable ideas about what, what their, their children are doing in the Lowell Public Schools, what these essential understandings are that we're trying to make part of every single day in, in the Lowell Public Schools. And I think that, that will be particularly helpful for our families and ultimately for our, our teachers in the classroom as well. So, it was clearly a much more exciting meeting than Mr. Leary's, that's all I'm going to say. And I would submit that as a report of progress before my colleague's approval.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any further discussion on the report? Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, we have a Joint Facilities Subcommittee with the City Council, I suppose, the third best Subcommittee. Report of the meeting of Friday, May 11th, 2012. Mr. Leary.
Actually, be the fourth best Subcommittee.
Actually be the fourth best subcommittee, because the CFT is actually three subcommittees. But this was actually much more of value. We actually had a joint subcommittee with the city council. My counterpart, the chairman of the facility subcommittee on the city council, our councillor Kennedy, and I presented a, or held a facility subcommittee meeting at three schools, at the Riley, the Robinson Middle School, and at Lowell High School. In attendance from the city council was the mayor. That subcommittee was councillor Broderick, councillor Mandonsa, and chairman Kennedy from the school facility subcommittee, committee person Rossikowicz, and committee person Gignak and myself. We had lots of staff, including the, the city manager, manager Lynch, the superintendent, our assistant superintendent, the chief financial officer of the great city of Lowell, and numerous other individuals. First part of our tour was at the Riley School, where we were led on a tour of our facilities by the head custodian, Richard Sarmiento, and the principal, Sean Karabatsas, really pointing out to councillors our capital plan that we presented, giving them a visual of what the concerns were. And I'll let the other committee members go through that information, but the, the actual presentation of a visual to councillors, having, have a chance to take a look at why we're putting this information into our capital plan was important. We went to the Robinson School as well, where the assistant principal Fred McCosker, as well as the, the principal Thad King, presented and showed a similar tour of what was going on in a particular middle school. And then we went to the high school, where we met head custodian Pat Harrigan, who again went through the entire high school in terms of, you know, what were our needs and what were the issues. In addition to the staff, we also had a, we had our favorite blogger in the world, Jerry Nutter, and the Lowell son that actually was partaking in this, in this information. Oh, and no, I, thank you. And most importantly, councillor Laurie was in attendance from the city council. So we had a quorum of city councillors who could have took initiative and passed our capital plan. What happened at these meetings, I think, is important, because we just presented the capital plan, which has significant dollars in terms of tens of millions of dollars. And the council is going to be making tough decisions in terms of how they go forward with this year's budget, as well as the next four, well, actually five budgets in, in a row, probably a little longer. Councilors asked intelligent questions regarding what was important. They, they have a good understanding as to what we're nee, looking forward to do. We have a follow-up subcommittee meeting, joint subcommittee meeting on May 22nd to follow up not only our capital plan, but also talk about other initiatives in terms of what we can do to repair issues such as, you know, painting issues and working at smaller repairs that can be done without putting it into a capital plan. I think the meeting is a good dialogue. It shows a commitment from our administration and from the city administration, and I look forward to having more of a dialogue with the city council in terms of the capital plan that the council will be voting on this coming budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Any further discussion on the report? All those in favor? Motion to accept and place on file by Mr. Gignak, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next we have reports of the superintendent. First report, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Flexibility Plan. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first report this evening is just to point out to the school committee, the changes in the federal government as far as, the state of Massachusetts had the opportunity to change to this flexibility model for no child left, from the no child left behind rigorous plan, that all children would reach proficiency by 2014. Other opportunities to work out realistic targets have been offered by the federal government. So Massachusetts has given us this opportunity to, to look at how, in fact, the accountability programs over the next years will change. So I'm just going to highlight some of the, the changes we'll see, and we have not even seen any of this yet, but it's coming, so I wanted to make you aware of it, that the existing federal accountability designations will change in 2012. So instead of the, the status that we've been used to over the years, that there's no status improvement corrective action or restructuring, those will be changed to number system. I would think it's quite similar, but it's just going to be a number system instead of the, the existing way. That the accountability targets will be a multi-year calcul, calculation, so you'll have over five years to do the improvement, and of course, you have to make those measurable annual goals as we go. This is a large change. There used to be a multi, multi-subgroups that were included, special education separately, Latino agent-specific, and you've seen them in, in the data we've reviewed as a group in the past. It's now going to all come together as one high-needs subgroup, which is a drastic change. Usually we can disaggregate, we'll still be able to disaggregate in our own way, but it's going to be grouped together, and this is the, the new federal flexibility piece. The CPI targets are based on half the distance to the goal, so they, they give an example, but an example here is, if you have a performance target of 70, and that's 30 points from 100, you have five years to make that goal 15, half of it. So you would have, you know, have to make, of course, three points to get to the 15 over five years. So they're setting that particular overall grade, so it's quite like the MCAS has been. You have to make that CPI growth over time, and, and we'll also still maintain that growth model piece. So there's just some different vocabulary, some changes, and, and it gets a little technical, but I, I do want people to know instead of CPI, it's going to be PPI. I know you're really interested to know that that will be Progress and Performance Index. So these are the technical terms, and you know, as we grow, we'll present them, and I just wanted to make you aware that this is something that states were allowed to, to put in application for. Massachusetts, of course, always being avant-garde, thought this was a best-case scenario for our young people, so these are the key features, and as we grow, we will become more familiar with them. I just wanted to make you aware of them.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do think there's some interesting changes in this that I think really do reflect well on the kind of urban education experience particularly. I don't, I can't speak to how that may impact some suburban districts, but for us, I mean, A, the idea of being able to track over time and not have a single year-to-year comparison point is so much more effective, so much more in giving, in keeping with giving truly helpful information that really can help guide us. So I think that was actually, that, that's a great move. I also really think the idea of pulling together our subgroups into an at-risk group and, and I guess a not-at-risk group, I suppose it would be difficult to kind of make that distinction. But I really, I think that also shows a real thought process that recognizes that, particularly in an urban district, you're talking about students who are coming from, you know, with a myriad of challenges in front of them. And the fact is, what those challenges are aren't as important as what we do to work with those students, because I think no matter what the challenge may be, in many cases, it's the same, it's, it requires the same kind of interventions to be successful. And then the other, as I had looked at it, I do think that this is, this shows us that science now is going to be, you know, we've been anticipating it, you know, certainly we've been discussing it for a while, but science will be moving into the MCAS arena. It does heighten the focus that we need to bring to, bring to that. I think we've been laying some great groundwork, certainly as we talk about the STEAM programming earlier tonight, it all ties in with that. But we do need to recognize that this is going to be one more, one more target that we're going to be stretching to reach. So overall, and it doesn't usually happen that when you get these kind of things from, from ESE or from the feds, that you can really see the thoughtful consideration that went into them, but I really can see that in, in this, and that's really encouraging. So I, I think this is great information, particularly for Lowell, as we move forward in terms of how we're really going to be judging ourselves and how we're going to be judged against other performance measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the report? Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next we have the proposed FY 2013 budget calendar. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a revised calendar. As we made the plans for the last time, we found there were some conflicts. Yeah, we do have a very, very busy calendar, both for budgetary purposes and socially, coming up with the high school graduation and all kinds of end-of-year celebrations. So the proposed dates are listed below, and, and if there are any questions or concerns, I, I welcome them from the committee.
Any discussion on the report? Mr. Leary.
Just, I think, you look at the, the calendar, next Tuesday would be our finance subcommittee meeting. Would be held at the high school, and it'd be our first open opportunity after we receive the budget tonight to actually start beginning a dialogue and ask questions, not only of the administration, but also allow the public to come into beginning asking questions of, of what our budget's focused on, where, where the numbers are going to be. Lots of questions, I think, the entire committee will have, and I think the first question that everybody will be asking is, what's the class size K through 12? That's really, I think, what's, what's important with any budget is you're asking for your needs, and the number one need is, how do you, how do you move your staff to educate the students? And what are those numbers? So that's the first thing I think we need to get in every committee member's hand, if not, if not already in the budget book, but before the end of the weekend, where are our numbers? After that meeting, I think, we had lined up another meeting on the 24th, but I think one finance subcommittee meeting is a good start to open that dialogue. I think after that, on the 30th, which is the following Wednesday, having an initial budget hearing, going through the budget, making some discussions, having open forum for the public is also important and available at that time. If there's additional time required after that, we can always plan another budget date, which, you know, probably will happen at that point, but I think people's schedules become more known as we roll into the beginning of June with graduation, not only for the high school, but for the adult ed. But I think the calendar, at least at this point, has one solid public forum in another location at the high school, so there's enough room for folks to attend. Mr. Lang has informed me that that finance subcommittee meeting will in fact be on television, so you can actually have access, so people can review that. It allows a week for additional time, so if committee members have questions or need additional information, which is common, then at that point, I think, we'd be able to have time to get that for the initial budget hearing. Again, the initial budget hearing probably won't be the last one, but at least it'll be the first one set up. And as customary, what we do is we open the forum, as we will at the finance subcommittee, open the forum for part, for public participation. One other item, I think, which is important for the committee and for the administration is, if we can get this online, like by tomorrow morning, so the public has an opportunity to go, start going through what our budget is over the weekend, so if they would like to attend the finance subcommittee meeting or get in contact with the administration or with a committee member, they have enough time to go through what we actually have within the, the budget material. Much like, what, one request I would make, and I'll end on this note, at the finance subcommittee meeting, if we could have folks who will, for example, the high school administration, some representative from different areas, in case we have information or questions, we'll have those folks available to answer, or at least understand where we're coming from when we ask a particular question, especially class size. I think that's kind of the, that has always been, in my experience, one of the most challenging questions for any committee member, especially with, you know, three new members on the board. It's a question like, what does this data actually mean? Can you explain it to me? Because it's important as you make a vote in terms of how you align your staffing, making sure when you make that vote or ask the question, you have that information. I leave it open to my colleagues for other information, other questions. The process, I think, this year is a little bit different, because we're not looking at massive cuts, we're looking at some additional funds, which, you know, and, and health insurance savings, which Mr. Lang will, and, and the administration will be able to present in, in its entirety. But, you know, it's a solid budget, I think. We're going, we're looking forward to going through it and having questions and making changes if they're necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the budget calendar? I very unfortunately won't be able to make the Tuesday meeting, as I will be here, but...
I don't know if we have to take a vote on the actual meetings now, again, because they were changed. I'd make a motion to, at this point, vote to approve the calendar as it exists, knowing full well that if we need, as we always need, we, we'll always add additional dates.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignak. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next we have a report on the Homebase Program. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is presented by Ms. Ann Murphy, answering a motion made by committee member Kristen Rossikowitz on the April 18th, 2012 school committee meeting, which was requesting that I work with the Homebase Program to develop processes of identification and outreach to our military-connected families with children in the Lowell Public Schools, the purpose of enhancing support systems for the families. And so Ms. Murphy reports to us that, most recently, on April 27th, social workers viewed a film about home, homebase programs, and that was facilitated by a person from the Homebase Program, and they led a discussion with our social workers on identification of military families and understanding the stress that, that can involve by, by military families who are affiliated with the, the military. Also, they have committed, the agency has committed to work with us to ade, address the needs of our children and, and, and what, in fact, we need to work on as a district, and so our social workers were, were involved, and they have made a commitment to continue this work with our social workers in the Office of Student Services. And if the committee wishes any more detailed information, I invite you to ask, Mrs. Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the report? Ms. Rossikowitz.
I just want to thank you for the quick work on this motion. This is a, an easy win for us, I think. It's, it's a free service that's provided to the district, and it's certainly a great service for our students and our families. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And standing motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Rossikowitz, seconded by Mr. Gignak. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, there is a report on preschool transportation. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, a report submitted by Ms. Ann Murphy, answering a motion that was proposed by committee member Kim Scott and Mayor Murphy on the March 21st meeting, which states, "Request that I draft a plan to reinstate busing funding in support of universal preschool access. Port should include consideration of potential redesign of busing districts for early grades, preschool to fourth, not only to reduce costs, but in order to encourage greater sense of neighborhood and increase public health benefits, as well as a potential sliding fee for service." And so in answering the, the motion, Ms. Murphy has presented where we stand right now. So this particular year, we have had, we have 510 seats available, and we save 170 seats for special education students. We did have registered last year 437 non-special ed kids, and this year, that's gone up to 462 non-special education students. And we have to comply with the voluntary compliance plan, so we have to make sure that there is balance in our buildings as much as we possibly can. And so this year, as well as in last year, there has to be a lottery, because there will not be enough seats in our, in our preschool. And so that lottery will take place, and they will be given choice according to the rules and regulations that we have in our parent information system. And we will let parents know about the notification, we will give them a choice, as we always do. So that's what we have as far as the seating. The transportation costs and what will happen, the tran, the transportation costs, of course, following the regulations for early childhood transportation, it takes small buses where there's capacity for a small number of students. And so the transportation to transport our, all of the children would be between $790,000 to $800,000 per year, and 16 additional buses would have to be put on to be able to provide transportation to the children who attend our preschools. And so the problem at hand, and what's really not specifically answered in, in the motion, is it is a revisit of the compliance plan, and so that whole neighborhood busing, and we have not had that discussion at this particular point, because we're still under those regulations. However, that was requested, and that is something we will have to move forward to do in the future. But there is quite a lot, the population is not equal across the system, that has led for us to have some issues. In, in the past, there's many more students in the West Zone, there, and so it, it's hard to disperse, and that transportation cost, adding that is a substantial amount of money that we have, at this point, not included in the upcoming budget for next year. So... at this point, not included in the upcoming budget for next year. So, in looking at a fee-based preschool transportation kind of a plan, Mrs. Murphy provided us information, thinking, if we looked at who's going to preschool, you know, and existing, that out of the 340 preschool students, 255 children would be eligible for free transportation. So, the percentage is, you know, 75% that would be having that option for free transportation. It would also leave 85 students to be assessed on their family income, if they, in fact, could be charged for transportation, if we were doing this on a sliding scale, which we don't have that kind of collecting agency in our organization. We have not done business that way. And so, this is an update with what structures we have in place at this particular time to answer the motion, and I know there are probably questions, because not everything is able to be answered at this particular time, but we did want to get back to you. So, I welcome questions you may have, concerns in this particular report.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Leary?
Thank you for the information. There's one thing, I guess, we've already full for preschool next year. So, the real, I guess, the first issue, it's good to know the numbers, because I think that's, it's good to know the actual per-bus cost, that's the key. We actually need more, look at, do we need more spaces for preschool? And then, look at, better yet, if we had busing, would there be more kids, and what would we do to get more spaces? I think that's the part of the charge here. I think this is something that, I know, when I came on, this was always, a lot of the committee members, and Ms. Martin was here, this was an issue that people wanted to fund, because it was important. I think it's something we still need to look at, that the voluntary desegregation compliance plan, I walked in at a meeting this morning with Mr. Dakota and Assistant Superintendent Murphy, and they were looking at, just brainstorming, probably they do this every day of their life, how do you refit the zones to make it work more efficiently? I think the issue comes back to, we need one more school, we probably need it in the Pawtucketville section of the city, and if we had that, a lot of this, these issues would be resolved. I don't know, it's, I don't want to bog it down tonight, but it's something that, I appreciate the information, I guess it'll give you more brainstorming, more questions offline, in terms of, you know, how do we use this in this year's budget? Are there folks that are missing preschool, because we don't afford the busing? And I think, what type of priority do we want to set going forward on this? But I think the other issue is, how many kids are, I think we said 200 kids are not going to preschool. How many of those kids could we grab and bring them in a setting if we had the space and the resources? Thank you. Thank you for the work, though, I appreciate the numbers.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
I have a follow-up to Mr. Leary's comment. Beyond the 200 that will be on the waiting list, how many more do we have that won't attend preschool this year, because they don't have transportation? And I'm just curious whether or not, in the enrollment process, whether or not, I know we give neighborhood preference, you know, the closest schools to your home, but whether or not that's, we let people know out there that, you know, if there's a transportation problem, you know, do we make sure that they're given a preference at all to that school within walking distance, or, you know, I mean, I'm sure a lot of parents don't have gas money or don't own a car to get the children to preschool. So, I'm just curious how we, you know, we do that, you know, do we give a preference to people that don't have transportation?
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. The Parent Information Center regulations has school choice for parents, and so, the first choice is, there are usually three choices that parents are given. Homeschool is, of course, one of those choices. Whether or not there are slots that are available, when, in fact, parents come to register, that's the issue. But, homeschools are offered, that's part of the registration process. So, a lot of what happens is by choice, if people want a particular school, but usually the neighborhood school is one of the choices. And again, it comes by how, in fact, kids are placed. So, I know homeschools are offered, it's just how they take upon it, or when you have access. So, if one school's full, then you have to go to your second or third choice. So, that's the process that's in place.
Thank you.
So, there's no need portion in it, you know, with the preference? There's, you know, sibling preference, and there's a neighborhood preference, but there's no need-based preference for parents that can't get their children to preschool?
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's implied, I'm not exactly sure, and I don't know if Ms. Murphy has more detailed information about the process, but generally, I don't believe, I believe kids are called in, of course, we save slots for children with special education, but those children have, get transportation. So, I don't, at this particular time, I don't think there is an assessment kind of, I know assessments are given upon entry, but we're not using that specifically for placement, as far as I know, but if it's more current than I know, I would ask for clarification, so.
Ms. Murphy?
Last year was the first year that we've had to have a lottery, because of the pre-K enrollment, and we hadn't had a lottery in many, many years. And so, when parents, up until last year, came to register the student, we certainly, maintaining our balance with our compliance, were able to place students pretty much at the school that the parents chose. Last year, we had so many kids register that we had to have a lottery. And this year, we're going to have to have another lottery. Based on just the early registration for pre-K, we expect that we'll have about 162 students that we will not have seats for, if everyone who registers and gets a seat accepts it. So, what we'll do is, we ask parents for their three choices, and the lottery is really based, we do it through the X2, the student data system, and making sure that each school has compliance, because we know that when we look at minority, non-minority populations, that we have certain schools that groups tend to go toward. We know that we have a very high minority population count at the Maury School, for example. And lots of parents want to have their minority students in the Maury, but we need to have as many non-minority students there, so we can maintain our 60/40 balance. So, when X2 does the lottery system, it will pull X number of students out of the minority pool and X number out of the non-minority pool, based on those first choices, so that those kids go into the seats. And we found that that was the most effective way to maintain our balance, have a true lottery system, and parents, if they didn't get their first choice, they then go into the lottery for their second choice, if I've explained that. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I do think that this brings up a lot of conversations that we'll obviously need to have going forward. You know, for myself, I do think it's important that we remember that we're really, at the end of the day, in the K through 12 business, and that's what this district is meant to do. Our preschool efforts are meant to support our K through 12 activities, so they're not the primary business that we're in. And the idea of, I don't, and this is, you know, the committee will have these discussions, I'm sure, but philosophically, we're not meant to expand to solve the preschool problems, or the preschool need in its entirety here in our community. I mean, there are a lot of facts around that, I mean, there's certainly the idea that our preschool program is not the kind of program that is necessarily going to solve a family's problems. I mean, for working families, our program is extremely difficult to take advantage of. It's a half-day program, it won't serve a family that has working parents. There's also the issue of, are, you know, for a public school to provide these services is far more expensive than it is for community-based organizations to do it. So, I mean, there is a certain balancing act that comes in this. I think that, you know, certainly as we move forward, looking at our program and making sure that it is designed to serve the students, we can as best we can, but I don't think this is kind of a marketing opportunity, where we want to start expanding our services to get more and more kids in the door, when this isn't our central business, our central task. And it can be, you know, it can certainly be distracting from the work that we are charged with doing all day, every day. So, I think that as we move forward, it'll be, you know, in our budget context and all the other conversations that we're having, it'll be important to make sure that this committee takes the time to really make those, make those kind of choices as to what this program is meant to be and how to best implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the report? Motion to accept and place on file by, excuse me, Ms. Scott? Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossikowitz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next, we have a personnel report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your monthly update on who we hired, who's resigned, who's retiring, for your review.
Thank you. Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowitz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next, we have a list of eligible teachers. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, too, is your monthly meeting notice about our existing list of eligible teachers and their certifications for your review.
Thank you. Any discussion on the report? Motion to accept and place on file by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next, we have a report on transferred students. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Mrs. Ann Murphy's trifecta report, transferred student. And so, in answer to the motion made by committee member Kristin Rossikowitz on May 21st, request that the superintendent furnish a report of the number of students who have transferred into Lowell Public Schools over the past three years from the charter schools in the Technical High School. Identify the proportion of the students that required special education services and alternative school support in this transition. And so, Mrs. Murphy has provided us with some historic information of the enrollment records over the last three years, I believe. And so, you see the charts in this report that talks about, over time, from the high school, the Greater Lowell Technical High School, we have received about 39.3% returning from the alternative, from the tech, that have become dropouts or have enrolled in an alternative GIGED program. And so, the data is in the chart on that first page for you all. From the charter school, to look at the information from the charter school over time, the report here talks about the special education numbers at the community charter schools, about 14.2%. And so, if you look at the second page, these are the transitions, the people who've transferred into our district by level. So, for instance, at the elementary level, you've had 98 transfers, 76 non-sped, 22 sped, so 22.4% of the transfers have been special education students at the elementary and K to A level. And at the middle school, 15.1% have been children with special needs. At the high school, 7.5% have been children with special needs and alternative needs, 14.3% of the children we received. So, this gives you the details that were asked for in the motion, and then, further information, out of the 672 former community charter school students, here you have a number of children who've gone to each one of our schools, and if they are children who identify with special needs upon their entry into our district. So, again, thank you very much to Mrs. Murphy, thank you to Paul Schlickman, Coordinator of Research Testing Assessment, who helped to glean this data for you all, and if there are questions, we welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rossikowitz?
I'd also like to offer my thanks. I know that we ask you for a lot of reports, so I'm sure it feels like at times that you're constantly gathering reports and data for us, and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of my colleagues, we really appreciate the work that you do. I found this report really interesting, and I think it ties in really nicely with an amendment that Representative Gary recently filed with the legislature, requesting that DOE perform a study on the dropout rates that tie into, that directly tie into the transfers from our technical high schools. So, I think it starts an interesting discussion about our systems and how they need to mesh better, and, so, I appreciate, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the report? Motion to accept and place on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossikowitz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next, we have a presentation of the superintendent's recommended FY 2013 budget. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Lang passes out the documentation to you all, I'll just talk about the process, the simple overview this evening of the additions in our budget. Luckily, first time since I've been sitting up front, we're talking about a little extra money, which is happy. And so, I would just want to do an overview for you all, and to just detail the potential additions to the budget that are recommended by this administration for your review and for our future discussion as the team that leads the school system. So, just so you know where we stand financially at this particular point, the House and the Senate have agreed on the Chapter 70 funding from Lowell is going to increase. So, the Chapter 70 increase is $4,819,637. So, that increase is offset by the money that we had last year from the stimulus left over from, we had saved, which was in the amount of $4,877. And so, we've taken into consideration that offset and the addition, so that's almost exactly even by, you know, $19,000 being the difference. At this particular point, the recommended FY budget will include an additional $1 million that the city manager has planned to recommend to the City Council to come to our appropriation to the public schools. So, that's $1 million that we have coming our way. So, the resulting budget total will be $138,437,342. That represents a $1 million, a little bit more, increase in FY 2012, so there's a 0.74 increase for us. The other modest increase that we have is a $2.5 million savings in the Lowell Public Schools GIC movement. So, that additionally is money that's coming into the district. And so, as you all know, we have made dramatic cuts over time in this school district, and we have spent some time, you're looking at data, speaking administrators, with administrators and others, to see what, in fact, some of the additions could be this particular year. And so, I'm going to just go through them, and then, of course, there for your review as we go through the budget hearings. So, the first addition to the budget I would recommend in the $2.5 million savings is that we reserve $1 million for potential contract negotiations, and just for the review of this committee. So, that was the first piece that I would recommend. The second piece for this evening's presentation is the kindergarten reconfiguration that we spoke about, that was spoken about in our Subcommittee meetings. So, that would be nine teaching positions, and I'm just going to talk in four paraprofessional positions, so it would be six teaching positions. And we had discussed three music, art, and gym special teachers that would service the Rogers School and the alternative schools that have not been equitably serviced in those special subject areas over time. So, that would be a really number-one priority for us, because that's something that we haven't been able to do. Additionally, we are in need of one- Additionally, we are in need of one FTE special education teacher. The initial outcome at this point from our coordinated program review was that we have to hire one additional teacher for special education at Lowell High School. We also further recommend adding a coordinator of student support services at Lowell High School. That particular position is the oversight of enrollment and guidance. It's the high school, alternative school oversight. It's a position we were forced to cut years ago, and we have most assuredly seen the data that makes us know that this is a position that we would like to reinstitute. 504 accommodation plans are under that. The consistent work of all guidance and social work, those are all the responsibilities under that particular position. In looking the recommendation from Lowell High School, one of them was 2.5 social workers at Lowell High School. That being that, at this particular point, Lowell High School has funded 1.5 social workers. And so, if we're looking equitably across the high school, even if we're comparing the numbers by house as to a middle school, there is at least one social worker in every middle school. This would allow us to have five social workers at the high school that would be assigned to house. That's caseload, that's at-risk kids, that's tying the dropout potential piece that we're really trying to look at as a committee, so much in a detailed fashion. So that's a recommendation, and that's the rationale behind that one. In another place in the organization, and we have more conversation at Lowell High as far as staffing and shifting staff and numbers that we will bring at another time, but as far as additional staffing, we have found at the K-8 schools, we have, in the budget, trauma, we have shared a math resource teacher. There's 10 grades between pre-K to 8, and they share one math resource teacher between the Bartlett and the Pine Art School, and we really find that that is such an incredible stretch. So, in a time where we do have a little bit of growth, that would become one of our priorities. Additionally, the same issue is in place with guidance. They have all the mobility in those K-8 schools and, you know, again, 10 grade levels and there's one guidance person. So it is quite a stretch. And that whole sharing is quite difficult, and we know that. We've had to do it with math resource over time, but especially in the K-8 schools, it shows up as something that is really not the most effective model. In continuing, we have recommended 2.0 instructional technology district support specialists. And so, this is not a position we've discussed in any of our subcommittee meetings, but as we are now looking towards hiring the three positions that this committee has supported, being the coordinator of technology, the webmaster, and then the help desk positions, that these district support would really be the hands, the eyes, the in-school models, how are you using technology? How do we know how to use technology? So that's a recommendation that between our tech staff, our network staff, the big-picture person who knows how to run technology and implement it, that these jobs are those kind of positions in the middle or elementary. We haven't quite decided, but for two positions because the instructional technology piece has to be led as part of the coaching model. And that's a small amount, but we're trying to work within the parameters that we have at this particular time. The next addition that we wanted to present for your review is the district support specialist. District Support Services, Student Support Services has taken a huge hit over time. And additionally, this year, we were doing some shared work between the Office of Curriculum and the Office of Student Support Services in the work of the homeless liaison. And as many of you know, you know, Dr. Palacea has served as ELL halftime and district support for the homeless piece. And so, her new position as a coordinator of ELL has left a gap in the homeless services and student support services. And so, that office has many responsibilities as far as that goes. And so, you'll see the rationale here and the details that you can review further, but that is something we see as a dire need. The next addition is what we have talked about earlier, being that STEAM person who would come in and look at the teaching of science and hands-on and modeling the kinds of high-level, interesting science that kids need to be able to know and be able to prove in the Common Core Standards and the PACT Assessment that will be upon us within the next year and a half. So that's that other position. And so, at this particular point, with the funding that we have seen, these are the recommendations of this administration for your review, for your discussion, and for any comments or feedback you may have at this particular time.
Thank you. Any comments on the initial presentation? Ms. Martin?
Really just to say that, you know, we all recognize what you go through in pulling this information together for us, and that I do, as always, I appreciate the fact that we can get it at a meeting like this, have some time to review the document, and then be able to enter into our budget hearings really with, you know, the time necessary to be well-versed and to have our questions and concerns ready to go. So, thank you for pulling it together for us tonight, and I'm sure we'll be having some interesting conversations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lang?
If I could, just because we have a few new members, too, I just want to walk you through the format of the budget, just to help you as you go through it to make your decisions. The first tab that we just looked at was the budget narrative that the superintendent offered, and then the next tab is the budget recommendations. So each of the actual line item recommendations that the superintendent just spoke to are listed on that one-page section. And you can see the page number, and these are not included within the budget document, the dollar amount. So when we actually get to that particular page of the budget, the committee will be making an action to either accept or modify or say no to something. But that lays it out, and it's been laid out by grouping. So you can see all of the early childhood related to kindergarten positions all put together, the student support positions, guidance, whatnot. Then you get into the next tab, which is the system-wide budget. And if you just look at the first page there, I did a quick little cover sheet for you just to show you some of the trend information on state allocations. So, our current budget was based on $121.6 million in Chapter 70. And we're looking at this point, the Chapter 70 number going up to 126.4. So that's a $4.8 million increase. That's offset by the Ed Jobs money that we're losing, so that's almost a one-for-one offset. And talking to the city manager, he is at this point recommending an additional $1 million over the city's cash contribution from last year. So that's been built into this factor. So if you take into consideration all three of those numbers, our level service budget, number of 135.8, takes into consideration all known staff increases, all steps, all lanes, all contracts we've negotiated, we have new transportation contracts, any of our contractual increases that we know about, and even some line item increases that we know need to be adjusted, is included within the 135.8 million budget, which then leaves the delta between the two numbers, the 2.5 million. So that's the number we were looking at and presented within about $10,000 or so, those recommendations on the prior page. So again, we'll have to go through those as we do. When we actually do meet to deliberate, it's the system-wide budget that we'll actually go through. I formatted it differently this year, so it reads up to down as opposed to sideways. So, I appreciate that. Hopefully you will. But it's 24 different pages we'll go through, and we'll talk about, and we'll answer questions in that particular section. And then after, what's been helpful to the committee in the past, the individual level sections. So you have your elementary, your middle, your high school, K to 8, and alternative schools. And this is very helpful, again, to just kind of compare trends year to year. And what I would recommend, as is done in the past, when you're looking at these charts, really look at the FTE comparisons. Those are the kind of the big numbers. So if you had, you know, four math stages one year and three the next, you can see those trends. Don't get fixated on the dollar amounts on those particular charts because they're tied to individuals, and if individuals move from one school to another, you're not going to track that variance in salary moving. It's really more the FTEs on these particular pages that I think will be helpful to paint the picture of over time what's happened with the individual school budgets. And all of the information in the last tab, Staff Salary Book, that's an actual listing. The first 53 pages are all the local budget operating positions, and then there's a colored insert, and then all of our grant-funded positions. But starting on page one, the numbers that are included within the system-wide budget feed right up from that page. So you can see your first grouping of individuals as a school committee. There are six FTEs, and there's a dollar amount, and those dollar amounts feed right up to the main budget page. So it's a crosswalk for you. So if you have any questions and you're looking through that, and you want to see exactly, you know, where I came up with an FTE or where I came up with a number, it all crosswalks back to that staff salary book. So that can be helpful also for comparison's sake.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Leary?
Just one, thank you very much for taking the time to put it together, but I just want to reiterate that we have this online as soon as possible so folks can take a look at it, and also that a finance subcommittee meeting is next Tuesday at 7:00 at the Lowell High School Little Theater. I think one of the other issues that needs to be really put into a line item is our technology. I know we use the suspense account as that. I think it's time to move that money into a technology account because that's why we're going to be spending the money. Folks should understand what we're looking at. At least put your recommendations in terms of that, and then we can have a good discussion on Tuesday and then ultimately on the first, the budget hearing. But I think the key, I guess, one thing that always comes up is class size, if we can get that information over the weekend. I don't know if there's any members have other questions, if we can get some of that information prior to Tuesday, that they'll at least have better informed questions to present to the administration and their folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Entertained a motion to accept this report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikwich. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ann Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Seven yeas accepted.
Thank you. Next, we have convention and conference requests. Entertained a motion to take the two together. Mr. Conway?
I'd like to ask a question on the first one, please.
Sure. Mr. Conway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent. On the Merklin staff there, this particular conference, I believe, it says here it's the teaching of reading, how many out of this staff of six there going, how many are teachers? Just for a point of clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Four. Four out of the six are teachers.
Okay. I think the way it was written was a little misleading there because I really didn't know what those individuals did, and then it has it towards the end here, it said, "A teacher to be named later," I guess. So that's why I wasn't exactly sure on that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Shall we take them together or no? Motion to take together by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. We have then, for the Merklin staff, Jason DeCaylo, Artemis Gore, April Watts, Kathy Bovey, and a teacher to be determined, along with Rebecca Hyde, pre-K through four, literacy coordinator. Request permission to attend the August Institute on Teaching of Reading at Teachers College from Monday, August 6th to Friday, August 10th, 2012, in New York. The cost of $925 per person will be funded through the Merklin Schools redesign grant. We also have the superintendent, Jean Franco, respectfully request permission to attend the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Executive Institute 2012 in Falmouth, Massachusetts, from Tuesday, July 10th through Friday, July 13th, 2012. The cost not to exceed $1,300 will be paid by the FY 2013 professional development funds. What's the wish of the committee? Moved to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ann Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Next, we have communications. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges Incorporated to postpone the Lowell High School decennial visit from 2014 to 2015. Madam Superintendent?
I'm sorry, I don't know where we are.
This is the letter from the New England Association of Schools to postpone the Lowell High School visit from 2014 to 2015.
Okay, sorry. The NIESC group had asked, had requested for a different, the next year. So that was the request of that committee.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Having looked at the two letters, is there a way? I just was a little confused by it because the letter that Headmaster Rose Merrick had sent certainly indicated that, you know, they had approached us hoping to postpone it, but their letter to us that they have granted our request for a postponement seems not to be the same thing. So, is there a way that we could just find out exactly how this happened and just who's being the accommodating and who's not?
Most definitely.
That would be great information. Thank you.
Yes, I will actually get an email out explaining that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Entertained a motion to accept and place on file by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, so voted. Well, I've had a lovely time here tonight, but unfortunately, it's time to adjourn. So, I entertain a motion. Mr. Gignac has a plane to make. Mr. Conway's far beyond his bedtime, and Mr. Leary's looking a little thirsty. Entertained a motion by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, I have no more.